Just a minute. You're on, you're on.
Ready? Thank you all, welcome to the February 6th meeting of the county planning commission. I'll call the roll. Jim Saunders.
Here.
Ray Strong.
Here.
Paul Rugie.
Here.
Bill Crowding.
Here.
And we're missing Sean May Callin, he's on the road, and our new member Jonathan Quinn is away from the county right now. Our first agenda item is the first meeting after the first of the year, we need to have an election for chair and vice chair. Do you have any nomination for chair?
I'd like to nominate Joe Hickman for chair.
Any second.
He's done an excellent job.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Vice chair?
I nominate Paul Rugie to continue serving as vice chair.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other nominations? I'm sorry, we read that fast, but.
So much for that.
Okay, thank you. Our first item is the review and possibly approval with the December 5th meeting. Any corrections or additions to that, to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our first item today is an application, well, it's a zoning text amendment request for assisted living facilities. Is staff here? Thank you, Rob.
My name is Rob Tracy. I'm an associate planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'm here today to talk about... Thanks, Matt. Let me start over. So, I'm Rob Tracy with Planning and Zoning, and today I'm here to talk about a zoning text amendment by Brickwood Assisted Living Facilities LLC, and they're requesting a text amendment to increase the maximum bed capacity for assisted living facilities in the community residential and critical area residential zoning districts from eight beds to 16 beds. Currently assisted living facilities with a maximum of eight beds are an administrative special exception, so that administrative special exception is reviewed by the director as opposed to the planning commission or the board of appeals. So it's an administrative special exception in the critical area, community residential, agricultural zoning district, rural character, and rural residential zoning districts. Assisted living facilities are required to be subordinate and accessory to the principal dwelling in size and appearance. And on page two of my staff report, you can see the applicant's text amendment and what it would do to the specific, excuse me, specific provisions of the code. So in reviewing text amendments, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the county commissioners, and in their motion and considering the text amendment, they should consider two things. The public need for the text amendment and its, how it complies or deviates with the comprehensive plan. So, the public need for this amendment is to provide for additional assisted living facilities. As noted in the Kent County Comprehensive Plan, by the year 2040, it's predicted that one in three county residents will be over 65 years or older. The proposed amendment is partially inconsistent with the Kent County Comprehensive Plan, which supports the development of a variety of housing options for the elderly, but it directs that growth to be within the towns, villages, and designated growth areas. The community residential and critical area zoning districts are intended for low residential use. The planning commission should discuss whether the testification of the proposed use is consistent with intent of these districts as well as the Kent County Comprehensive Plan. Staff does not recommend amending the existing use to increase the number of allowed beds. Instead, staff would recommend that the new use be added as a special exception that would be reviewed by both the planning commission and the board of appeals. Staff would also recommend adding a new, adding new approval criteria related to road access, public sewer access, parcel size, and the use would be permitted through a special exception and the community residential and critical area, excuse me, critical area residential zoning districts to be conditioned upon, I believe, eight things. So, and that is found on page number three onto number four. And the recommendations stem from things like the facility manager or owner being on the property, the rooms being, not being designated or constructed as several dwelling units, and we recommend a parcel size of at least five acres for appropriate access. Staff would recommend sending a favorable recommendation on the zoning text amendment as amended to the board of county commissioners, and I'm happy to go in further depth or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rob.
Sure.
Any questions for Rob? There no correspondence on this?
No correspondence.
The text amendment. Do we have a number of how many of these assisted living private exist in the county?
Yeah, that was one of the things that I looked into. There are a couple. I apologize, I don't have the specific number on hand. I know that there are a couple within the towns of Rock Hall, within Chestertown.
Well, I know the ones, the major, the players, I just, the smaller, obviously more private, but.
Yeah, I apologize, I had looked into that. Not, not a lot, but.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob?
One was, the first one that I had was, Joe just, he just asked, do we have, or can a map be made of where these are all, where they all exist? You know, so that we have some identification as to how many, how many there are?
Of the types of facilities that are considered assisted living, there only are a handful. So that doesn't include, like Karen Point, the Chestertown Manor, whatever, Autumn Lake, those types of facilities. There are a couple in Rock Hall, there is one up in Coleman's, and there is the one that's here.
Because you're also looking at the amendment as where it should be serviced by a public sewer. I mean, are any of them or all of them serviced now by public sewer or public water?
The one in Coleman's is not. Any of the others are.
And the others are?
Mm-hmm.
And this one here?
This one's on public sewer.
This is serviced by?
Yes.
Okay.
We certainly wouldn't have suggested a zoning text amendment that the applicant wouldn't qualify for.
Right. No, I understand that, but I had to ask, I'll be honest, I drove out in that area the other day, I just, you know, I did not look at the map, but I just, just kind of went and looked at the facility to see what's there. And, okay.
I mean, we certainly could provide you with a map. I guess my point, my point would be that...
Not necessarily...
Producing a map could delay your, your decision on this, and I'm not sure...
I would just like to request a map be made. I don't necessarily need it for this decision, I'd say, but I think we should have an idea because, as you mentioned, this, maybe this is the first of one of, of an enlargement, but who knows if, you know, if more come down, come down the road, and, you know, how many can you actually have, let's put it that way? And I don't know how many employees this, this one has, but what, I think going, you know, if you expand it up to 16 beds, how many employees are there? And is it 24/7?
Well, I mean, the applicant is here and can answer any of those questions.
Yeah, I'm just letting them warm up, you know, he knows what's coming.
Carla, I noticed in the village, in Intense Village, they're only allowed four beds. And they have, they have sewer, why, why, most of them would have sewer, why are they limited to just four? Do you know?
That's just kind of as the...
I doubt you'll ever get one over five acres, but...
Yeah.
No, the distinction is, is that in village and intense village, and I want to make sure I get this correct.
With a smaller footprint?
No, it's that you then can have convalescent homes. So you can have, as a special exception, you can have convalescent nursing or group homes for the age with five or more beds.
Five or more?
Correct.
Five or more?
When you're in the village and Intense Village District, there isn't a specific limit on the number of beds.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you, Rob. Is the applicant or their representative here? Please step forward, please. Name your names and addresses for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Stella Choukame. I reside at 5307 Elbon Lane, Rock Hall.
Sir.
My name is Adibola Ojo, and we reside to get at 5307 Elbon Lane, Rock Hall.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Is the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Thank you, go ahead. Now, just, just so you know, we're not considering what you're going to do there, we're considering a text amendment for the entire county, but you can go ahead and explain some, you've heard some questions, but go ahead and present.
Okay, yes, so currently we run an eight-bed facility. We have eight employees, and it's a 24-hours facility, so we always have employees there. The reason why we're looking to expand is because we have the space, that's number one. Number two, we see the need. In particularly, in Rock Hall, we have three, there are three assisted living facilities currently. One of them, I understand, they just, because they're not under the Kent County, they just increased their size from eight to 11. That's what's there because of the size of their property. And so, we've been getting a lot of calls, particularly from those people who are Medicaid. None of the facility provides that care because of the cost. It's way lower, and no one is doing that. And the reason why we got more information about that, one of our employees who works with the Department of Aging, she works part-time, and she tells me how she has people that are becoming homeless. And so, we decided that, you know, it'd be good for us to expand and be able to provide that need and fit that, there's a gap. And as we know, that the aging keeps increasing, this is the baby boom time, period, and so that's one of the reasons, because we do have the space, and we want, and it's attached to our property, so we're not, we're still trying to, you know, be in line with what the current rules are and with the ordinance, and so that's why we're looking to expand it and asking to see if, you know, your good office will be willing to, you know, review the text and look favorably to our application.
Thank you. Sir, do you have anything to add, or?
Just to support that, recently, I believe mid-last year, we solidified a relationship with the, what's the name of the entity, for the student internship program?
Okay, apprenticeship.
Apprenticeship, whereby we can bring in students from, you know, from the high school.
The high school, yes.
High school, yeah, to come over to our facility. Nobody's doing that in this area at all, to, because I'm prior Navy, and I know what internship and prior job experience, you know, does to you as a, as an individual. So, we did a partnership last year, and so far we've been able to bring in one student from that school who's currently on our payroll, and also coming in twice, three times a week to get hands-on training, which goes into the curriculum at the school.
For him to be CNA certified.
To be CNA, because we look at it from the angle of, even though we're in the business of providing care to the older people, there are younger generations that needs to be nurtured. There is no too much opportunities, and little that we can contribute will go a long way. Yes, we are, you know, for-profit business, but at the same time, we have an obligation to contribute back to the community. We are from, originally from Upper Marlboro PG County. For us to come over here and establish ourselves and want to establish our company here, our business here, means a lot, a lot of deal to us, and we're part of the community now. We live here, we reside here, and we think what better way to contribute back, if not through all these little channels, and also looking forward again to more opportunities whereby we can contribute back to the, to the community. So that's to support, you know, what she has said is the reason why we're pursuing this opportunity, and we hope that will be favored to move forward.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the commission have questions for them?
Not right now, but for them to expand or do what they're doing would have to come through, through site plan also, correct?
Yeah, this is a text amendment only allowing, possibly allowing that use.
I just want to make sure.
And it will go through the board of appeals, too, as a special exception.
I like, I like that staff's recommendation that it be changed, but that it comes before, it's not an administrative variance or special exception, it comes before the planning commission, and then with a recommendation to the board of appeals. But I just think it's...
I think, Carla, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if the current procedure is, and if this text amendment as written would go, they wouldn't need a special exception, they would apply and would go through the site plan review, administrative review. Is that correct?
No, they, they wouldn't need an administrative special exception. They, because they would be amending the special exception that they already have.
But it wouldn't be a special exception that would have to go before the board of appeals?
That's correct.
So what you're recommending as staff is an amendment to require it, rather than being handled administratively, to go before the board of appeals with certain conditions that you've, or criteria that you've listed.
Correct. We're, Rob did a lot of research and is recommending that we sort of establish like a tiered system, so you've got, if you, four beds or fewer is basically a home occupation, the five to eight can be administrative, and then the nine to 16, and the zoning districts where it's allowed would be in front of the board of appeals.
Okay. So the current size allowed would be administrative, the expanded part would go before the board of appeals?
Correct, that's, that's what we would be recommending.
And I, thanks, Rob, and you both, of mentioning the intensification, which could be a concern, but the five acres should take care of that, shouldn't it, I think?
I would think so.
And I, except for your employees, the traffic is not, you know, based on a lot of movement with your residents, I'm sure.
Yes, sir, and we have, the, the expansion is, actually, because we have an erected structure, which is the barn, and we have a builder here behind us, Mr. J. So we already have a structure, we're just trying to reconstruct that to accommodate it, yes, sir.
If you had 16 beds, how many employees would you have approximately?
Currently, we have eight, and out of those eight, we have, what, about six, six full time? So we're looking at maybe like double, close to double, maybe, maybe additional four to six full staff, and then maybe two more on, on...
So roughly, maybe around 12 or 13 people.
About 12, yeah.
But then, of course, they're not there at the same time.
Right, that's what I'm saying, no, on-site.
So on sides, four will be there during the day, and then at night, and then, yes, and then they rotate.
So you kind of double that, if you go to 16, you know?
Exactly.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good. Is there anyone in the public or online that has any questions or comments? Hearing none? Anything else to say? I think you gave a very complete presentation.
No, that's all, thank you.
What are we thinking? I think I appreciate that it helps this aging community. I don't like you looked at me when you said this aging population. But, yes, and I know that you purchased a business that had a great reputation, I hear the same in the public, so I know that certainly is nice to know.
It's nice, I hate to say it, I drove out there the other day, I had to see what, see what it was all about.
Thank you.
It's very well kept, very nice.
Thank you, sir.
So hopefully, anybody else that might do it follows the example.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Go ahead, Jim.
I like the idea of what you were saying, based on how you reach out to young people in the school system to help them to develop their, their way of learning them to take care of the elders, and giving them the opportunity that they need, because right now, in this county, the young people doesn't have the type of opportunities. And from what I'm, you said that you didn't already grasp two or three?
So apparently, the state has a program, this apprenticeship program, and so you go through a process for you to get approved, and we got approved, and then we worked with the Kent County School District, and then we got one student who's been working with us since October last year. So we working with one just to see, test the waters, and at the end of the school year, we'll probably be able to take two more, one more additional, so we'll see. But this particular individual, he will be graduating in May, so we would re, you know, reevaluate and see if we can take on two.
That's really great.
Thank you.
You know, that's really great.
Thank you.
Because you're reaching out also for the young people, and you're trying to take care of the elders.
Yes.
So, everything I see is a beneficiary for the whole county.
Thank you.
And everything, you know, and the elders, I'm getting close, I need something like this. So I, I'll go along with whatever you do, you know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Another, comments, questions? If we, someone chooses to make a motion, and we need, I think we can reference Rob's description of the proposal, but we probably should read the actual A through I recommendations instead of referencing them, to be more complete in our approvals. Has anyone want to make a recommendation?
No, I can try.
Good.
I make a recommendation that we send a favorable recommendation to the county commissioners for Brookwood Assisted Living Facility LLC to amend and increase the maximum bid capacity for living, assisted living facilities in the community residential and critical area residential zoning districts from eight to 16 bids, provided that going from eight to 16 bids would require review from both the planning commission and the board of appeals. That as a condition of those, the property owner or facility manager resides on the premises, the rooms for the use are not designed or constructed to be separate dwelling units and may not be sold as separate dwelling units. The appearance of the structure and property remain that of a residential use, so that the average neighbor is unaware of the assisted living facility's existence. The structure meets all Kent County codes, including building code and health department requirements. The applicant has received approval from the appropriate state of Maryland agencies. The facility does not create an unacceptable environmental impact by way of noise, odor, noxious materials, or other nuisances. The facility does not generate traffic of the type or inappropriate amount for all access roads in the surrounding areas. It does not require road improvements detrimental to the character of the area. That the property is served by public sewer, that the parcel must be at least five acres
Do we have a second to that?
I second it.
Good. Any discussion? And I'll ask staff, Rob, what about the other, this, the section six, or the, where's the ag? You recommended the ag zoning district.
So currently, it's permitted use in the agricultural zoning district. The applicant's zoning text amendment is specific to the critical area and community residential.
Okay, I'm just trying to get this tier level, that is, if we do this, that tier level will be intact?
Yes, so currently, it's a, it's an administrative special exception, it will remain an administrative special exception for facilities that have five to eight beds. When you increase to nine to 16 beds, there, there might become a special exception.
I understand that, I was, we had talked about the, are we clear on what those tiers are in this, with this amendment?
So this new tier would only be for community residential and critical area residential. It would not include the other zoning districts that are part of the administrative...
Okay, that's what, I want to make sure that's, okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing on my call for the question, yea or nay, Jim Saunders?
Yea.
Ray Strong?
Yeah.
Paul Rugie?
Yes.
Bill Crowding?
Yes.
And I'll vote with the affirmative, so we'll send a favorable, or a recommendation to the county commissioners.
Thank you very much.
On this, good luck to you, and I hope we see a site plan soon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next item is discussion over, where are we here? The Everton Industrial Court decision and the remand back to the county commissioner.
With the planning commission.
Planning commission. Staff or Tom?
I think I'm gonna...
You're gonna handle it?
I'm gonna take the lead on this. So, last summer, you approved the preliminary site plan for Everton. That decision was appealed, and we had the hearing in December on that appeal. The argument that was forwarded by the county and also by Everton's attorney was that this matter was not ripe for appeal because it was a preliminary approval, it wasn't a final approval, and I don't have to advise you of your process because you're very familiar with that, that the site plan is not deemed approved until you have the final approval. So, the argument that was made was that the petitioners did not have the right to appeal at this time, their appeal was premature, because this was a preliminary decision, it wasn't final. And typically in law, you get appeals on final decisions, there has to be some type of finality before you have the right to appeal. So Judge Murphy agreed with that, and did find that this was a preliminary approval, and under our zoning ordinance and under zoning law, that the petitioner's appeal was premature, they need to, if they want to appeal, the time to do that would be after final approval. However, it was brought out that there were two other votes taken at the hearing, and one vote was to grant the 3,000-foot distance for curb cuts. And this was done in the form of a motion that was seconded and that was approved. And the second was the issue regarding the setback from Chesterville Bridge Road. And again, this was done with a motion, a second, and an approval, and it wasn't clear if those were final actions or not. And the distinction is, if this was just advisory, for example, if you made these motions and passed these motions, if it's advisory, if it's guidance given to the applicant as to how they should proceed and how, what they should put in their final site plan, then it's not really a final decision that can be appealed, because these aren't going to be final until such time you do the final site plan. However, if these two decisions are in fact final, and are not going to be looked at or reviewed or considered at the time you do final site plan approval, which means you took the vote, you're not going back to this, the curb cut waiver's been granted, the setback has been set, and that you are, no longer have the ability to review these or consider these at the final site plan, then these two issues would be final decisions from which an appeal could be taken. So it was remanded back for clarification, and what the court order says is ordered that the curb cut waiver and... the curb cut waiver and setback waiver issues are remanded to the Kent County Planning Commission for further action, either, one, indicating that waivers were not approved, or, two, issuing additional written findings as to what they considered their reasons for approving the waivers. Because when you approve something, you have to have a record and you have to have a reason for it and a basis. And often, when zoning actions or actions of an administrative body go up on appeal, often the reason why they come back is because there's insufficient documentation or evidence in the record to show the basis for why the approval was given or not, not given. What are the ramifications of whatever decision you make today? Well, if you say that this was a final decision, that this, the curb cut is final, the setback is final, then you would put your reasons on the record for approving them. And we would need to have these in writing, which can be done in the form of the minutes. Then we would go back to court and the petitioners would have the right to have an appeal on those issues at this time and litigate them. If you say that these were not final, these were advisory to give guidance to the, the applicant and such, final approvals will be made at the time of final site plan. Then once the final site plan is done and once you vote on that, then the petitioners would essentially have one appeal where, where they would raise all the issues at the same time. So in a nutshell, if you were to say, and again, this is your decision, if you were to say that these are, are final decisions, you need to put the basis for them on the record and it's going to go back on the appeal. And essentially, it results in two appeals because there would be an appeal on this issue. And then after final site plan is, is granted or not granted, depending on what you do, the aggrieved person would have an opportunity to appeal that issue at that time. Does anybody have any questions?
I understand what you're saying.
If, if we-
I know, it's, it's a little complicated.
If we determine it's advisory and not final, how does the, what's the process for us? Or, and the applicant and the appeal, petitioner or whatever?
I would say you would be giving, and Carla, I welcome your thoughts on this, too, that you'd be giving preliminary approval. It's not final approval.
Understand, but what, they, do we reopen the, the application on those two, the merits of those two advisories?
Yeah. If you, my recommendation to you is to have a, a record. And so it's probably best, I would think, to have this matter on the agenda for your next meeting unless you're prepared to discuss it today. And if you say it's, it was preliminary, it wasn't a final decision, that you would make the final decision at such time the site plan and put your reasons for that. And, and my understanding is historically, even though these are done exactly the way you did them, that historically, the, the planning commission, and again, this is what I, my understanding is, I don't have personal knowledge to this. But essentially, you look at everything as a whole when you do the final site plan approval. So if you do that, then I anticipate that whoever is aggrieved is going to appeal this. So if you grant the final site plan approval, the same individuals who appealed the preliminary would file an appeal of the final. I also believe that if you deny the site plan approval, that the petitioner would appeal.
That's the final?
Yes, the final.
I'm talking about what do we do now to get, if we determined it's advisory, what is the process?
What, what I would say, that you put something on the record saying that that was not a final approval. It's advisory. You maybe put some things on the record to say customarily, that's how you do it, and that final approval will be given on these issues at the same time that you do final approval, consider final approval on the site plan. And then I think you should also put reasons on the record as to why you're giving this advisory opinion or why you are giving preliminary approval to these, these issues. So it, it would essentially be twofold. You would be saying, this isn't final. And you would also be saying, here are the reasons why we're giving this guidance and going in this direction. Carla, is there anything you wish to add?
No, I mean, I, I, I don't feel that making that, making a set of findings would be appropriate today. And it sounds as if your advice is that no matter what, they, either, either we come back at a future meeting and finalize those decisions, which makes them appealable, or kind of clarify that they were advisory and that the decision will be made, the, they will be finalized when final site plan review happens.
Yes.
So either way, we're going to kind of revisit.
That would be my recommendation because I think the board should have the benefit of looking over the materials from that, that meeting.
That's what I'm getting at.
So you can give careful consideration because as you see that this is going to be in litigation one way or another, again, at one point. So I would suggest that you have it at a future meeting, preferably the next meeting, and give it careful consideration. And regardless of whether you say it's advisory or final, that you put on the records the reasons for why you think the setback should be such and why you think the curb cut waiver should be granted.
What, whatever we do today, you still got to come back for the final, right?
Yes. There, there, once this, this current litigation is resolved, I anticipate that the, the applicant is going to come back before you for final site plan review and approval. I also believe that if that site plan approval is, is granted or denied, that's a final action. That is appealable. And there would be an appeal on the merits because I believe that if you grant it, the petitioners that appealed the preliminary are going to appeal the final. And if you deny it, that the, the applicant is going to appeal. So I believe there's going to be an appeal no matter what you do.
I'd like to, I think it's got to be next month.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
And I, I guess we're going to need all the transcripts from that meeting because there were reasons given for those, both of those.
Yes. And those are available.
Yeah, we can.
And the minutes and the transcripts are all available. They've actually been printed out. So Planning Office can get that to you.
And we just put it on for next month?
Yeah. I don't think we have enough information to-
That's, that's my, I agree with the chairman that given the ramifications of this and the significance of it, you really need to do a good review of the, the record before you make these decisions.
I would agree with that.
Do we just?
Make a motion?
I think you would make a motion to put the issue of the curb cut waiver and the setback for the Everton application on the agenda for your March meeting.
I think Mr. Yeager just made our motion.
Say so moved.
Now make the motion, please.
I'll make the motion following Mr. Yeager's lead. How's that? A suggestion?
It'd be better if you made the motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we put the Everton project on the March Planning Commission agenda to review the previously approved curb cut waiver and the setback waiver on the preliminary site plan.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Staff reports. Bill's on the line. Bill, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I don't have anything. Just want to say Carla's doing an absolutely wonderful job and, and I'm just trying to follow along and, and keep pace. So, thank you.
Thank you. Beth, Rob, Mark, Carla?
No. You know, we're just, it's kind of, things are picking up. It's January, or it's now February. I think we've already had more than 30 building permit applications for 2025. You know, so we will anticipate, we do anticipate that the March meeting will be a big meeting. We know that Morgan Exhuler is hoping to be on for final site plan review. We've just put this, the decision about related to the curb cuts and the setbacks. And I think we've got several other applications that have come in that will be also on the planning commission.
Them boys from Delmar were powering light in here. We like to talk to them. Just got our electric bill.
Would it be possible to get the packet prior to the, before the weekend?
I can make no guarantees. We can, we can get you the transcript, we can get you the transcript material, the Everton materials by probably tomorrow. And what I'm going to recommend is that we will send you a PDF of the transcript. And then if you let us know what pages you want, it's very long. And so it would take a, I mean, it's probably several hundred-
Right.
-pages.
And if you could have the minutes for them also, that would be helpful.
And I mean, we'll certainly, we have a printed copy in the office. You are certainly welcome to come in and read the printed copy. You might even come up with a way to check out a copy. But I think it would be very difficult to make an individual.
I'm also looking for anything new, you know, for anything new that's coming up. It's nice to have the weekend.
I, I understand that.
I'm making a request, that's all.
I, I, I know that. And, and we, we try our best. You know, we've got a lot going on and we're short-staffed, so.
Well, I, I understand that. I'm just-
And that Everton meeting, that, that's all on YouTube, too, shouldn't it be?
Yes. I believe all of that meeting is on YouTube.
Very good. All right. Anything else up here from the commission? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
I was just, just trying to get before-